Meeting has come to order. Do you have minutes? No. We'll provide. I think we had another meeting earlier. Public here. Okay, we want to change the Home Mill Charter. And as far as I'm reading here, the current administrative code adopted standing committee called the East Hampton Cultural Council.
How, how?
Thank God you're here.
I was just looking, I just picked up your, your number. I was just gonna call you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Galley. You're calling at six.
Oh, well, I could've made it to six fifteen. I hadn't known that.
That's okay.
Well, you needed your exercise, right?
Just, you didn't have anything.
Uh, one of our city councils is around here. He's coming. I'll wait for him too. You're late, but we love you anyway. I already opened the meeting. Meeting is formally delayed for the president of the council to walk in.
Boy, you brought a tight ship here.
At six o'clock?
By time, yeah.
Okay, we'll start over. We have no minutes from the last meeting. Gee, we'll fix that. Well, because of you here, Joe's here. Ten point one, ten one of the Home Mill Charter establishes subcommittee, if I'm reading this right, which shall be called the East Hampton Cultural Council LLC. And its primary purpose was grant management. But as I'm understanding this, that title conflicts with the word "cultural council" as it relates to the mass culture. So what's the confusion then that you're hearing to clean up by changing the name?
So in 2011, which is a while back now, East Hampton City Arts merged with the local cultural council and Art Walk. So we took on those two things as well as bringing in Southampton and West Hampton members. So we looked at the larger picture and said, how can we make it stronger and better? And that's where that plus sign comes in.
ECA plus.
Yeah, so within that time period, what we've been working to figure out how, what's the best way that we merge as one unit? So currently, what happens is our, our ECC, our East Hampton Cultural Council, is the grant giver. So the ECC receives funds from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to give out. Currently, it is seen as a subcommittee, but it should really be part of ECA plus. So I've just explained that to you, and when I explain this to many people, they get sort of fuzzy eyes and not quite understanding what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish here, because we're talking in all these different acronyms. There is the LCC, the MCC, the ECC. Basically, we just all want to be ECA plus. And that's what we're attempting to accomplish here, is that the ECA plus Grants Committee is part of ECA plus as well.
Okay, let me just, currently, East Hampton, ECA plus does have a subcommittee called the East Hampton Cultural Council.
Yes.
But you want to change the name so that the umbrella organization, ECA plus, is part of the name of the subcommittee, so everybody knows it's all one organization. Am I reading that?
It would actually become a committee rather than a subcommittee?
Well, a committee. It is now. Whatever you want to call it, it's a committee.
Right, right. And the reason why, so it would be tracked by the city itself. The appointments will be made by the mayor rather than a subcommittee.
So the ECA, oh, I see. So the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee, you're creating a new committee. You're not changing the name of the current subcommittee. You're creating a new committee.
So there are two things. There is changing it to a committee and changing the name so that we do not have to explain every time that we say, oh, we're giving out a grant. Because actually, to the public right now, we're trying to utilize, you know, the ECA grants as the terminology so that people are less confused. Because right now, people are very confused as.
I have a couple more questions. East Hampton Cultural Council right now?
Yes.
A grant-giving committee. Is that formed by members of the ECA plus committee? In other words, you create that committee from your parent committee?
No, they can be separate.
Yeah, but who forms that committee? The mayor? The mayor doesn't appoint to East Hampton Cultural Council.
Right.
How is that committee formed?
It is formed through the ECA plus.
Right, so it's not necessarily the same membership. It's not, you're on the subcommittee, like twenty members, three of them are on the subcommittee. It's a separate committee, but it's appointed by ECA plus. The change would change the name, but the authority would rest in them by themselves, not under ECA plus? Because if it becomes a separate standing committee appointed by the mayor, it would seem, it would seem to me that it is, has its own authority. Am I reading it right?
Well, it does have its own authority already in a sense, as recognized by the state. So the state, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, they have to follow certain guidelines. They have to follow certain reporting procedures that the MCC requires. So they already have to follow those, sort of the separate guidelines comparatively to the ECA plus coordinating committee. When the ECA plus coordinating committee originally merged with the grants, the LCC, it was a requirement that if you were on the ECA plus coordinating committee, I mean, if you were on the LCC committee, you also had to be on the coordinating committee. We've seen that this has not worked, because people have been spread too thin. We immediately have people sign up and drop out because that was a requirement. So we, we made it so that that was not a requirement anymore. You know, we said, this isn't working.
Is that, in, where is this all written down?
That was through Mayor Tosner prior to me being here, so I'm not sure.
So the East Hampton Cultural Committee currently has its rules, established by Mayor Tosner. They don't have to be, that's separate membership. But it's, it's appointing authority is the ECA plus committee. You're changing the appointing authority.
No, no, the mayor appoints the ECA plus coordinating committee. They were seen as the same, as you can see in the administrative code there.
Are you typing about the old?
The old administrative code. Yes.
So the new administrative code that formed the ECA plus committee.
So actually, if you read this, it says, "ECA shall have at least one standing committee to be known as the East Hampton Cultural Council."
That's what I'm saying.
That is an actual committee, so we're not actually forming a new committee. We're changing the name.
Yeah, but, no, you are, because you just said, and if I'm hearing this right, the mayor's gonna be the appointing authority for the new committee. Am I not right on that?
Well, she's currently the appointing authority for the coordinating committee as well. I thought you said it was through the CCA.
But now, oh, she, she appoints the coordinating committee, but she doesn't, but the coordinating committee appoints the cultural, cultural, it's the cultural council, subcommittee.
Right.
So she doesn't directly appoint. She directs the people then.
Right, but it should be going through the mayor. That's how it should be happening.
I am saying.
Why is that?
Because that is, the, the state would like the highest appointed figure in the city or town to appoint those, those members of that committee.
And they're handing out money.
And those are the cultural councils.
Currently, they're called the cultural.
So each city and town gets a certain allotted amount of money.
And I think a lot of people are familiar with the Mass Cultural Council. So why would you change the name of it from that? I don't think that makes enough sense.
Because they're actually East Hampton City Arts. There's many organizations throughout the state that do this, whether it's the Somerville Arts Council, North Adams has one. They all have different names. And the way that they merge is, is different. But basically, it's a communications, it's a way for us to communicate better with the public, so people understand who we are and what we're doing. It is through ECA plus that the Grants Committee has their website, their information.
It doesn't, that'll, so the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee already exists?
Yes.
It exists now as the East Hampton Cultural Council.
Right.
But right now, the standing committee, the ECA plus, when I hear about a standing committee, it's a committee that's formed by the parent committee. That's why this is confusing to me. ECA plus is the parent committee.
Right.
And it's saying to me, they form the East Hampton Cultural Council, current, which is also called the Coordinating Committee?
Well, no, the, the state actually forms the cultural councils in a sense.
Let's say creates.
It gives the, finds out.
They don't add, they don't pick people.
Right, no, they don't pick people.
Who picks the people? That's what I mean. The standing, the committee, ECA plus picks their cultural council. Right now.
Currently, yes.
Yes. So what you're doing is changing that standing committee to a separate committee.
Right, and this actually says, no administrative changes will be made other than a name change.
See, now, that's what I don't understand. That's, that's not true.
I, I don't understand what you don't understand.
The ECA plus parent committee appoints members to the East Hampton Cultural Council LLC. You've just stated that you want the new standing committee, East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee, to be appointed by the mayor.
Right.
The ECA plus shall have one standing committee. That sentence says that the committee is underneath the umbrella of the ECA plus. So I'm wondering,
Well, I guess.
Maybe it doesn't matter, but I'm just wondering if she's appointing to that committee, is it a separate standing committee or is it underneath it? Maybe it doesn't matter, Joe. I don't.
Do we have any, do we have any examples of that in city committees right now where there is, are there are two committees that you appoint, but one is certainly secondary to the other? Do we have anything like that now?
Uh, no, but I'm wondering too, you know, if I could just ask two questions. First of all, I think one thing that Dan was heading toward and that, you know, and I would want clarity too. So if everything were to go through as requested, we would end up with technically the two committees, ECA plus, which means East Hampton City Arts, and then the,
East Hampton City Arts.
East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee. So when we have our sheets of all boards and committees, there would technically be two.
There would.
Correct?
There would.
Okay, and what we have now is what Dan was, you know, providing clarity from you, is we have ECA plus with the Grants Committee that's, you know, now called the Cultural Council, the LCC, yeah, LCC. And what are you saying that technically that probably should have, even though it's been under the ECA plus, the LCC should have been going, the members there should have been going for, through the appointment process to Burns?
They should have, yeah.
That's what I thought she was getting at.
Well, I think the clarity to me that's needed here is that the ECA plus shall have one standing committee. That, that sentence tells me it's an umbrella committee with a standing subcommittee. And that's what it says to me. I don't think I'm reading that wrong, and I think it should be a separate. Correct me if I'm wrong. You don't want to have any administrative changes in this, which means that East Hampton City Arts, the parent committee right now, does it have any authority over, supervisory authority over the East Hampton Cultural Council as it is not?
It does not.
So having two separate committees, like the mayor just said, would be appropriate, because there's no, whatever you call them, they're separate. So what I would like personally to clear this up is that sentence removed. It should be, we shall, East Hampton fifteen four code shall change the name of the East Hampton Cultural Council and make it a standing, make it a permanent, I don't know what we call them, permanent standing committees, appointed by the mayor. I want that in there, because right now, am I right? Is that confusing to you guys?
No, I think I'm following it the way you are. I think that's it. The question is, and I think you already answered it, Burns, we had said this before, so the East Hampton Cultural Council, which you're not gonna call it that, the new one, right?
You're gonna call it East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee.
Thank you. You do not have to be on ECA plus to be on that committee. Is that correct?
That's right.
So that would make it.
And it's separate appointment.
Right.
She could appoint the same person to both, but there's no requirement.
No, and we have a few members that are, that serve on both.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, it's not a requirement.
No.
But what this is stating to me is that it's a subcommittee. That's what it says to me. That's why I use that term right at the beginning. And if you're saying ECA plus shall have at least one standing committee, it tells me immediately that you're appointing. You're changing the appointing authority. It should have been its own committee to begin with, whatever it's called. So we have to write this, and maybe you can help her, Karen. I'd like to postpone this, this public hearing to name change to clarify this, Jen. Do you agree?
Yeah.
I'm not making a motion. I'm just saying. I think it has to be cleared up that this is a separate committee that's appointed by the mayor.
Okay, and that would be the language on the second, into the second to the last paragraph right then? Instead of the, like, shall have at least, it's the one, it's the one standing committee that's, that language is the part that's.
That's confusing to me.
Right, because it seems like it's a committee under the ECA plus.
Which is.
Right, so it would be.
Well, it's, I mean, it's just later, I believe, about, I mean, you have various subcommittees that are not necessarily appointed. They're appointed by the coordinating committee, not by the mayor.
That's how they usually go.
Right, exactly.
But this is not what you want. You want it appointed by, you want a separate standing committee.
Right, and when I asked Barbara, the city clerk regarding this, she said the way she read it was that it already reads that there is one committee. It is a committee, not a subcommittee.
That's true. But it doesn't, it reads to me as a subcommittee. How does it read to you, Mayor?
But it's a committee, not a subcommittee.
But it says, "ECA plus shall have." Shall have is we possess this committee. We are the appointing authority. I think what you're preferring is, you said this, the mayor should have been appointing members to the original East Hampton Cultural Council.
Yes.
If you want that, we need a separate administrative code, fifteen dash five, eliminate this here. We will establish a new standing committee called the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee that shall be appointed by the mayor, which will follow the rules of the old East Hampton Cultural Council LLC. I think it should be a separate committee appointed by the mayor, and it should have its own administrative code establishing the committee.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any.
It doesn't change anything you're doing.
Oh, no, I realize that, but I'm wondering if there's any other similar situations out there. I know you said there's not that you can think of here in East Hampton where, you know, where there's there will be this connection, because I just want to make sure that that connection.
The title connection.
Yeah, the title connection, because we are working together as an organization, you know, as a committee, two separate committees. We work very jointly.
Well, your colleague at East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee.
Right.
Well, I mean, and I would honestly kind of rethink that. I mean, the Mass Cultural Council has a great reputation, and why would you want to not be affiliated? Because I think that's what people look for.
It's not that we're not affiliated with it. It's that they refer to us as ECA plus. The external community is referring us as to ECA plus, including those that are looking for grants. So they're getting confused as to how to find it. And like I said, there's many communities and towns, they don't look at, at MCC. There's the MCC acronym, the LCC acronym, there's an LCO acronym. We've talked many times with the Massachusetts Cultural Council about this issue, and they said, other towns and cities have done this. What you need to do is figure out the best way to communicate with your public. And this is how, since our merger, we're finding it.
I actually think that makes sense.
That makes sense, but two boards is the way to do it.
The two, calling it East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee makes sense, because that connects the connection. But this entire paragraph should be separated out, fifteen dash five, or whatever makes sense, establishing a new committee, which has, which should act as grants management agent regulated by the Mass Cultural Council. That shall be in the code that establishes the committee. And you can write whatever language you need. So I would do that, because that way it establishes the committee as under the appointing authority of the mayor, which is what you want. And I think the confusion in the past, where the mayor didn't know she was supposed to appoint to this, is because it looks like.
Right, there was a lot of confusion. Barbara and Burns and I have been over this a couple of times. We've discussed this last year and the year before.
Doesn't that clear it up? You have a separate committee?
I guess my concern is, what Burns's concern would be, you don't have a concern about having two separate committees, because that's, that's.
That's what you have, what you want to do.
Absolutely.
That's what you want to do.
It's a different funding source.
But what is your, it looks, it seemed as if you had a concern about, you know, like, so in other words, we would be leaving ECA plus as it is, and then starting, creating a new committee, which would be, you know, EC, well, East Hampton City Arts Grant Committee. But it seemed like you had a concern about us not having it be part of, you know, be part of this, where there would be, shall have at least one standing committee. So that seemed to be a concern of yours, that you wanted ECA plus to, you know, be tied to it in some other way.
But it's only in name.
Absolutely.
Because the other thing you said, which is important, is the Mass Cultural Council wants the chief appointing authority to appoint members to this Grants Committee. It's dealing with money. So in order to do that, I think legislatively, we have to create a standing committee that puts us under the charter that the mayor appoints to.
That's what I was gonna say.
We have to do that legally, because that's what Mass Cultural Council wants. This doesn't state that. Even though you want it to state that, this says it's a standing committee of ECA plus, shall have, says it's possessed. Do you see what I'm getting at?
I understand what you're bringing up.
And I think this will clear it up on the appointing. It doesn't change any of the duties.
Absolutely.
It just changes who appoints it, and it makes it concurrent, uh, current with what Mass Cultural Council wants.
Sure. I, I agree with that, and I think if that'll work.
I think you should come back to us with new language for a new committee.
My, my question to that is, what would be the timeline for it and say, the, we have this subcommittee now becoming a committee, or how?
You provide that language to me.
What is the timeline for?
I'm gonna have another rules committee meeting. We'll continue the public hearing. We should be able to get this approved at the next meeting, because it's already on the council agenda. The fact that we're changing it to, changing the name is still there, but we're changing it, its procedural method to a standing committee. So we don't have to go back to the council, I don't think, Joe, to reappoint, to reestablish that it's in our committee. Our committee will deal with it as soon as you get the new language for us. And I think it's really simple. Administrative code fifteen, establish, requesting that the council establish new standing committee called the East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee. Administrative code fifteen dash five. Get the right numbers from Barbara.
Does it have, like, how many people are on the committee?
Yeah, you have to.
What numbers are you talking about, Dan, from Barbara?
We need to know which administrative code it is.
Those are from me.
Fifteen five.
Right, so.
That's the latest one is fifteen four, so it's fifteen five.
Right, but I guess my question is, and I get that, then.
No, no, you know what? It's fifteen four. You're just changing this.
Right.
You're not, you're not, what you need to do is dissolve, there's two things in the motion, I just thought of this. Dissolve the East Hampton Cultural Committee LLC as a standing committee of East Hampton City Arts and create East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee.
However it was, however it was designated in the.
And then you have to reappoint everybody.
Yeah, the mayor would have to submit.
And a part of the administrative code change is, how many members are on it now? And where is that written down?
Right here, right here.
But is it established by code, or is it in the charter of the East Hampton City Arts that it's established?
I mean, essentially, it's established by the state.
Oh.
Yes.
Because it's under Mass Cultural Regulations?
Yes.
Yes, they have state terms.
Okay. And you can write that in the language. Mass Cultural Council established that this committee shall have five members. But, but you're saying, under the regulations, so that way the mayor has, knows how many appointments she needs to make. I don't know.
Sure, sure.
We're just trying to clarify it.
Absolutely, that's, that's why I'm here.
And I think the defining thing is what you said about the cultural council mandating that she make the appointments.
Exactly.
And let the public know that you're looking for a place, so that people come.
And I don't know if that.
Is there members now?
There, I have no idea.
So that, that would be to my next question. So we have people that want to join, and this is actually, you know, how it came about, because we are really, we have new members. We need to look this out in code. And so how?
Who's on the Cultural Council LLC now?
It's, the chair of it is, we have.
Well, how many members do you have?
Five.
We have, we have five.
And what is the Mass Cultural Council?
What is their mandated membership?
Anything, they, they.
At least?
They recommend that you at least have a chair, a treasurer, and a secretary, which we have.
Well, maybe you, you should get back to ECA plus committee, explain what we want, and decide how many members. Because if they say a minimum of five, then you could have nine. But I recommend that it's an odd number, and I recommend it's not too many, because you're, you're giving out money. The higher the number, the more you need a quorum.
And I have spoken to them about that.
And to answer your, your specific question, Burns, once the council votes to create a new committee, I have to post it for ten days, so that, you know, it's on the website, it's on our bulletin board, so that people know to get me a letter of interest.
And all the current members should know that they have to reapply.
Right, exactly. And then we could put them all forward at the same time, and then after that, as they come in, depending on the vacancies you have. But it, it would be ten days posting.
So basically.
After the committee is created.
By going through this process, you've shined a light on a problem that has existed.
Absolutely.
How are people appointed to this committee? And because the state wants the mayor to appoint them, this is the only way to do it. Because the mayor can't appoint it to a standing committee of another committee. I don't think. Maybe they can, but I don't know.
I was asking if that existed and she didn't know.
But it's just as easy to, you want a separate committee. You might as well just create it per the charter, our charter.
I think it makes total sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think the name alone will bridge that association we're concerned about.
You could write down, at least one member shall be a member of the East Hampton City Arts Committee, so that there's a link, like, we have a finance committee member that's part of the CPA.
Absolutely.
You could write that into the language. That gives us a connection. Well, yeah, but put it in the language, that means.
Right, but the terms are different. You never know if things could change.
Absolutely.
So that way, there's a link between the two, and if there's a membership meeting, East Hampton City Arts would like, I don't know, you could look into that.
There's also something a little different, too, Burns. With the cultural councils, so to speak, their terms are different. It's not to, is it not to exceed two terms? Was it there's some?
It's not to exceed two terms. They have to serve for three years each.
Three years, right, three years terms.
It's not a bad thing to be redundant and repeat Mass Cultural Regulations, because that way it's in writing that you know, you know, and then, you know. Those regulations, like minimum and maximum of membership, or if there is no maximum, how many do you want on it?
Term limits, things like that.
Term limits.
That's what I was just saying, because I know there, you know, there's just a few that are through the state that are different. Like the housing authority is five years. This one is three years, but not more than two terms.
Right.
Or two continuous terms, it's something about two terms.
It's two continuous terms.
Two continuous terms, so that's important.
So you can get off and serve three years later.
It just makes it easier to find that information in the future if we need, versus rummaging through Mass Cultural Council laws and things like that.
Sure, sure.
Anything in there that would be good.
Right, right, because they've been different terms.
Look at the regulations.
Do you have someone that's gonna be able to help you with this?
Absolutely, and we have, you know, our, the MCC information is very available online.
Yeah, anything that you think, you don't have to put everything down verbatim, but anything you think would be valuable to a member who wants to join to know. Should be in the administrative code.
Your mission.
Mission. But I like the notion of having an ECA plus member shall be appointed to the committee.
I, I wrote that down.
I don't know how that would work, but I think we wrote it in for the charter of the CPA, so that our finance committee chair is also a member of the CPA. I like that. There's your linkage.
Absolutely. And not to harp on the, the timeline, but they do vote on grants in November.
Well, you'll get this, the first meeting in October. If you want it done, the timeline depends on getting this. You agree that this isn't as simple as you thought it was, right?
You can't post it until the committee is.
I can't post it until after the council approves the committee.
Right, well, here's the timeline. We approve it on the first meeting in October. You post it, we approve the appointments. You get them to the city council for the second meeting.
It would be available for the second meeting.
We make the appointments.
That's.
And that includes the members that are already on.
Right, exactly.
And they can keep.
With a letter of interest.
They can keep working.
So that would still work in October, Burns?
As part of our motion, as part of our motion, I'll ask, and I, I think it's legal, that in transitionary, the current East Hampton Cultural Council shall continue their work, at which time their East Hampton City Arts Committee members are appointed. In other words, there's a transitional authority. What do you think of that? That way they can continue, you're looking at grants.
Have you found something else, like, they're not going to be able to vote on in November? Is that why you're concerned?
Yeah, they have to vote on the grants.
No, it's just, this came about because there's two new members. So there's two people that wanted to apply, and I was rereading this and rereading the guidelines for the MCC, and I recognize there was that inconsistency there with the appointments and realized that we would have to go through this process and make sure.
Technically, all your members right now aren't legal, because Mass Cultural Council says they should be appointed by the highest authority in the city.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like we're compliant at all.
Right, so.
So you have this, I can't say that.
Well, my question to you too is, Dan, that you just mentioned, the, everything's in order, the council approves at the first meeting, I post it, the appointments come to you at the second October meeting. Usually, yours go to a subcommittee, appointment subcommittee, which we would come back to the first meeting until November.
But if I do the transitional motion, that the current East Hampton. But if I do the transitional motion, that the current East Hampton Cultural Committee LLC, these members shall be temporarily appointed to the committee, to which time the mayor can reappoint, as, we could do that, I think. In other words, we can...
I don't know. I mean, if they're noncompliant right now, their vote wouldn't count, because they're not compliant with Mass Cultural Council.
Well, they wouldn't be voting until in November.
But they can continue their work in looking at all the grants, and, you know, they're not voting on anything.
Right. So they're not voting.
You know, and I, I'm not sure how all LCCs, local cultural councils, act in different locations, but I don't think they're seen as committees within a city necessarily. Many are self-guided volunteer groups that are appointed by someone within the city.
Someone, yeah, but you just said, and I don't have the regulation in front of me, you said that the mayor is supposed to do this.
Yeah, but that's the highest appointed official.
Board of Selectmen in the city town.
Yeah.
And then it would be the same policy procedures that other committees do, you know, it's agenda, it's...
What is, can they be appointed anytime in November? Does that be the first week in November that they have to make these grants?
Well, they look at the grants, they, the grant application is due in October, and they typically, typically, they grant them, and in November, they review those grants.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, if we appoint...
No, no, it's usually the second...
So their appointment should probably be made by then. They can continue to meet. They have no authority to vote, but they can continue to meet, all right, assuming they all want to be reappointed by the mayor. And she could be, you know, I don't want any of these people, I'm going to appoint new ones.
Oh, they're all really wonderful.
Don't convince me, I'm sorry.
Yes, they are. I go to the awards night.
But you may also get some applicants that you can...
We got two new ones, thank you.
Well, we already have two new ones too, but we need, that's why we need to post it and get letter of interest from everybody, but, you know, definitely...
Okay, so Burns, here's your walking orders. We've got to have a new Administrative Code fifteen dash four that's rewritten, that eliminates the ECC, East Hampton Cultural Council LLC, and establishes the new East Hampton City Arts Grants Committee. The regulations from Mass Cultural Council you want to write down. How many members shall be on this committee, appointed by the mayor? And any regulations on there that you feel are appropriate?
Okay.
And that one member shall be also a member of the East Hampton City Arts Committee.
And I have that down.
Those are the things I think...
And what about following all of the East Hampton subcommittee rules, like posting agendas and that?
That's part of the open meeting law. They don't, you don't need that on a...
They've been doing that, yeah.
You have to do that by state law for all committees. You don't need to put it in the administrative code.
You might want to put your mission statement in there too.
Okay.
If you want to do a mission statement.